Mr. Hill, please call the roll.
Ms. Keener.
Here.
Mrs. Hager.
Here.
Mrs. Sevold.
Here.
Mr. Severance.
Here.
Mr. Mahan. Mrs. Woods.
Here.
Mr. Ruckman.
Here.
Is her motion to excuse Mr. Mahan?
So moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded he be excused. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. He is excused. The invocation this evening will be given by Reverend Susan Stevens from the Gambier-Appworth Methodist Church. Please come to the podium and say the invocation, and after you're done, we'll have the Cub Scouts come up and say the pledge.
Will you join with me in prayer?
Thank you for being here this evening.
You're welcome. Father God, we thank you so much for the opportunity to gather here this evening and do the work of this city. Lord, we just ask your wisdom to be in this council. We ask that your spirit would guide and direct this meeting, that you would grant them favor, and that you would grant them, Lord, just a peace about them, and that you would grant to this place, just your love and your will be done, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Come on up, Scouts, and lead us in the pledge. Thank you for being here this evening. Whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel on your packets are the minutes from the April 14th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, I'd ask for a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded they be approved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. They are approved. Counsel on your... Are there any petitions or communications, Mr. Hill?
There is a petition that was received today from Samantha Scholes of 12 Parrott Street in opposition to the legislation that would grant a rezoning of Cero South Main Street, starting ordinance for that purpose, and she asked that it be entered into the record.
Okay. That will be submitted to record, and counsel also received that communication today. And counsel, in your packet were committee meetings from six different committees from the last meeting, and we do have a liquor control license this evening. Mrs. Woods.
Thank you. We have a new liquor license application for Inglefield, Inc., Ford Newark Road, Mount Vernon. They have a permit class of C1, C2, and if there are any questions, if you would, please contact Mr. Hill.
Thank you. We have no proclamations this evening. We do have one person speaking on matters of city concern. Kathy Tate, please come to the podium and say your name and address. I limit your comments to four minutes. If you need an additional four, you can appeal to counsel for four more minutes.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Kathy Tate. I live in Howard, Ohio. However, I am chair of the Democratic Party here in Knox County, and we have an office on 9 East Vine. And because we work on 9 East Vine, we have had issues with parking. And I'm here because I believe that we need to have, or Mount Vernon needs to have, better planning ahead for future parking needs. Right now, there are 26.3% residents over 60 years old here in Mount Vernon, and that's according to the censusreporter.org.
I'm one of those.
Pardon me?
I'm one of those.
Yes, exactly, and so am I. And we have had issues with people not being able to find parking to come into our office. Our landlady, who's Lori at Williams Florist, she actually has had to purchase the rights to a parking space outside of her office or her building, her business, because she has a van that she needs to use. She also has purchased parking spaces because above us on the second and third floors, she has apartments at the lots that are in question for the land bank to take over. And she's very concerned about the fact that if she's going to be... I believe her son left, has moved out, so she's going to be needing another parking place for somebody else who moves in there. And she asked me to speak on her behalf as well. This past Saturday, there was a number... Well, as you know, the Mount Vernon News is being refurbished. A lot of parking has been taken away. Sidewalk access has been taken away. And, by the way, did all of you receive the email that I sent to you? Were you able to read it? If you didn't get it, I have copies, if you would like one. The street parking has been moved away, and we are forced to walk on the sidewalk on the north side of Vine, coming down from any parking up on Gay Street. And I don't know how many of you have actually gone out and walked on that sidewalk. I've turned my ankle on it. Because it is within a block of Main Street, I don't believe that the owner of that property right there at the corner of Gay and Vine should be responsible for repairing that sidewalk. Because there are so many people that use that sidewalk, I believe that the city should have to take over and fix, repair that sidewalk. It is a dangerous area. We have had people trying to use it with walkers, the rolling walkers, as well as the riding scooters, and they have difficulty maneuvering around there. The other thing is that we found that, yes, the Nazarene does have some parking after 5:30 at night, and yes, Park Bank has parking after 6 o'clock at night, and of course, on the weekends. But it's still not enough for people to really get there, and I am very concerned. And I'm one of those people. My knee is going crazy. I can't walk down that, so I end up walking in the street. So please, officer, do not cite me for jaywalking. I really don't wish to be cited for that. Anyway, there is a lot of things regarding traffic and traffic control, parking, all of this stuff. Are you planning on getting those... When you're doing the street, the crosswalks along 36, are you planning on doing that same thing along Main Street? I do know that there are those at Vine and Gay, as well as at Gambier and Gay. But when you go down to Main Street, it seems that the timing, especially on the weekends, when you can park at the Park Bank, you have to just stand there. It's not like they have been programmed to account for weekend traffic, which is not that much. Weekday traffic, yeah, that's fine, but there's no way to actually, for a pedestrian to actually signal that they are ready to cross the street, cross Main. So these are a lot of things that I think that Mount Vernon should actually start looking into for the future because it is extremely important, and we're only going to get older. And we're going to be needing... Yeah, I know. We need to have the facilities. I mean, one quarter of the population, more than one quarter of the population being over 60 years old, that's a lot. That's really a lot. And we're going to be getting more people moving in. And I only ask you to please consider, do a survey. I know that I've been told that they are going to be doing a survey of the people who are currently using the lot that's in question as far as being transferred to the land bank.
Four minutes, Rob. Would you like to appeal for another four minutes?
Yes, I would, please.
Counsel? Go ahead.
Thank you very much. But, yes, they are... According to the Gay Street Parking Lot Transfer Full Comparison, they're talking about how it appears that there will be more parking available. However, that's immediate parking available. That's not future parking. And I truly think that somehow or other, a study needs to be made. Now, whether or not you need to contact all of the residents and the businesses and ask them whether or not they need more parking, or if they have had customers complain that they do not have enough parking. I've seen businesses move out along Main Street as well as on Vine. Is that because of the parking situation, or is it because of rent? We don't know. A study needs to be made, and that's what I'm going to be asking you to do. Please study what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Counsel on your packets, are there legislative portion for tonight? Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? That being said, I assume it's approved by consensus, and we're going to move now to resolutions for third reading. The first one is resolution number 2025-42. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2025-42, a resolution authorizing the city to transfer fee simple title to one or more parcels of commercial real property owned by the city of Mount Vernon to the Knox County Land Reutilization Corporation for purposes of economic development and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Severance.
Yes, I move to adopt resolution 2025-42.
Second.
And moved and seconded for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Severance?
Yes, I've asked City Service Director Sowyers to help us make a little bit more sense, and I know we've had a few questions. We've received a couple emails or texts. But I've asked Tanner to kind of give us, fill us in a little bit here on where, one where or another, what would happen here.
Okay, so...
We have a couple handouts.
Yeah. Counsel, I gave you, thank you to the Engineering Department for breaking out this proposed upgrade, if you will. This is already what the city had planned for this lot. This is about a $350,000 upgrade. This seems like a lot, but when you consider the amount of engineering, the amount of concrete, the amount of work that goes into this, this is also, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, this is in combination with all the other paving that the city is planning on doing.
Right. So we have a very long cycle time on parking lots, so this is a fix-it-once, walk-away-from-it. We could do the Kroger philosophy, where you paint it black every few years. So this is more of that sustainability, that longer term. So it could be quickly fixed up at a lot lower cost, but what we've been doing, like at the CA&amp;C Depot, the other places, that's more of the, what I would call, permanent fix.
Yeah.
That's what we're doing there.
So some have said, you know, that's a lot of money to spend on a parking lot. Correct. And I want you to keep that in the back of your head, because this is maybe a high-dollar figure to redo. So keep that in mind, and we're going to just, as we have this conversation, this is all things remaining equal. That's just the high figure, all right? Cadillac parking lot. All right. I have laid out, so here we have a, and this is what Ms. Tate referred to, the Gay Street Parking Lot Transfer Full Comparison here. I've laid out about, you know, as if to complicate this more, four different scenarios. So on the back, first, I want to kind of put to bed something that has been said is, you know, there is an unofficial appraisal amount on the Knox County Auditor's website of about, I think, what, $116,000, $117,000? That assumes, that assumes that we are being, the door's being beat down for somebody to buy this property. That is not like some market demand for that piece of land, right? Nobody is asking us to buy this piece of land. Had somebody wanted to come in and develop it with a, you know, ex-business, I don't even want to entertain what kind of business that could be, then the city would have done what we typically do, which is go get a full market appraisal on that and then sell that lot for that cost. So I don't want people to think that we're just giving away a good, prime piece of real estate. It is currently a parking lot. The anticipation is it will become a parking lot, or it will remain a parking lot. So now, there's that. Let's flip on, and let's look at, you know, our options here. There are three, here's what happens if you vote no options, and then there's a, here's what happens if you vote yes. And then we'll walk down through those, and this can be made available to the public. And the first situation here is, this is currently a reservation-only lot, Mrs. Tate, Ms. Tate, I'm sorry, referred to that. In this situation, the city retains the ownership of this lot. If you vote no, and nothing changes tonight. The city retains the ownership. The Mount Vernon Parking Company manages the reservations, everything. Right now, the city has agreed to the, you know, the paving plan. So full upgrade costs, about $350,000. Brian, have you known anything to go down in cost recently?
Yeah, I mean, the only, the only thing is, this has not been bid. So sometimes the bids are a little lower, sometimes they're a little higher. So that's the game you play.
Anticipation as we get closer to the summer. I'm not looking forward to, you know, going down, but hey, never know. So let's just say likely $350,000, maybe more. Reservation-only parking continues. That's as far as parking access. The city remains fully responsible for long-term maintenance. There is minimal downtown support for this revitalization. And then, and what I mean by that is, you know, currently, there was a reference to the Mount Vernon News Building. The land bank has put, what, over $2 million, somewhere around?
I wish it was just $10 million.
Conservatively, $2 million in that building to, you know, develop more vendors, more businesses downtown. We want to see that revitalization. The city has contributed well. We're going to be looking at some alleyway stormwater. So that would be our contribution. Without this, that's about all we're contributing. Maybe some scape light work with them. So projects go full upgraded needed under the city plan. That's all on us. Other impacts, the city faces ongoing repair costs from weather damage, et cetera. So there's that. Any questions there? Because that's all things remaining equal. Vote no, no other conversation. That's what that, that's what that looks like.
How many total spaces are there there?
Forty-three. Forty-three.
Thank you.
Yeah. Two parcels, one lot, 43 spaces. No, but with public parking. So the next two conversations say, hey, why does it have to be this way, right? You can still vote no, but we can still have a conversation. We could say, hey, Ms. Tate and the rest of the community have a point. Let's all make it public parking. That shifts the conversation from the Mount Vernon Parking Company. They kind of wash their hands and walk away, but that increases the cost to the city. We have to then start worrying about, you know, everything else remains the same. Parking becomes public. That's the difference. It's not reservation-only. The city remains fully responsible for all the long-term maintenance. It improves downtown access, but it increases the city's operating burden when it, when you consider that we have to start looking at those repair costs, weather damage. We have to clear out inclement weather, so like when weather events, we have to come out, you know, salt it, make sure that we clear all the snow and whatnot. And that money's got to come from somewhere, right? Do we peel back the bed tax from the Mount Vernon Parking Company? There's an option. Do we start collecting parking fees? Well, you can't collect parking fees, right, because you got red, it's public parking. Okay, so...
So if we get revenue from public parking, do we lose our tax exempt status?
As a city?
Yes.
No.
That, if...
If we're getting revenue, we should make...
What, is that it's by individual lots? So if we are making, if, depending on whether it's considered to be a core function of the city and running for-profit lots is probably not, that property, that parcel would lose its tax exempt status, but only that parcel.
Because I know when we had the Gay Street Parking Garage, we were paying taxes.
Actually, it wasn't on the Gay Street Garage. It was on the Plaza Building itself because we rented out the spaces there. And once we removed all of the tenants paying rent, we were able to remove the building itself from the tax rolls.
Under this plan, we would not be collecting any sort of rent from anybody. It would be public parking. There would be no means to collect, if I'm understanding your question correctly.
Okay, so we own it now.
We own it now.
Mount Vernon Parking Company managed the reservations, and although they're not collecting from people...
Right, which I'm getting back and forth on that one.
Is it because, is it because they would be collecting the money if anybody were actually paying that is keeping us out of hot water?
I don't want to say the loophole, because it's not a loophole. The way that we are able to do that is because they're third-party managing that. So that's how they are able to collect those dollars. We still subsidize them with the bed tax, but they're able to collect, per lot, they're able to collect those dollars, and that's what assists even further in managing those lots. All right. Then there is yet a third option, where you can still vote no, and the city maintains ownership, and then the land bank maintains control that Sam has not agreed to yet. Why not? All right. So under this, we still pay for a full upgrade because it belongs to us. The parking becomes partial public parking because in this regard, what would happen is the land bank would create, would likely create a POA within its own building, and that would help them manage their spots within the lot because they would essentially sublet from us, but a portion of that becomes public parking. Do you see how this gets wonky, real fast? All right. But it does increase some public parking downtown, and it splits that burden even further, right? So he's not so happy, she's not so happy. You've just become the downtown parking queen. Congratulations. But, yeah, welcome to the club. So there's kind of a mix, but the city's burden still increases. We still, we share the full burden, right? Then there's a world where you vote yes, and you transfer to the land bank. Here's what that looks like. Land bank assumes the ownership. The land bank manages the lot and its costs through a POA, which they would have to develop through 18 East Vine, which is the old Mount Vernon News Building. The city would pay then only 35 to 40% of the project cost, and I put in parentheses, probably less because, again, what I have given you is our Cadillac cost. Once I hand this over to Sam and he wakes up from his faint, he may not want to do all of this, right? So what we would likely do, and then Ms. Woods asked, why would we even consider this? It's because it will still be, you know, and I think there have been a couple people reach out from the public, be like, why would you put public dollars on a, what would essentially be a private lot at that point in time? Well, it's not a private lot, because a large portion of it would be our public parking, working with a public partner. So if we are doing any sort of project, which I would also like to say, if you look at this legislation, there is nothing binding about us doing any sort of upgrade to this. This is simply fee simple transfer of ownership, and then we have to come back and work out a deal to do that.
So is this just like when we're voting on a rezoning, all we're looking at is just the zoning and not the plan?
Right.
Here, what we are looking at is...
We don't have to squabble over the bushes about this. We are transitioning over the ownership now. And then we work out the details between Sam and I, and Brian, and Tom, and whoever, and then we bring back the proposal to you, and if you feel like, over a certain dollar figure, if you feel like it's a worthwhile investment for downtown parking, because that's what I want you to focus on, the investment, the public investment for it is not to help out the land bank. It's to, for the fact that it's 20-plus, and that will really depend on, you know, after they talk to the people that already have those spaces, after they kind of take stock of how many spots their vendors will need. Consider that there is a market demand for them to maintain more spaces because they're going to have, I don't like to call it a food court, but essentially a public food court, you know, so... It's a '90s term, I guess, but they want, they want people to be able to come down there and utilize that spot, not only for the 18 East Vine, those food vendors that are in there, but also for the entirety of the downtown. I mean, that's CADF, it's a land bank. They want downtown vibrancy, and so do we, as the city. So there is a, you know, there's a market incentive for them to want to, not just to take over the whole daggone lot. And then they also want to be a good neighbor, too, so they're probably not going to come in and take off everybody downtown. I would certainly hope not. Good luck, Sam. So strongly supports downtown revitalization. That's how we, the administration views it. And the city is primarily relieved both of the large construction costs, so, you know, offloading that 65 to 70% on top of whatever the reduced scope is, and then the long-term maintenance obligations that we also get to shove off on that POA because it belongs to them at that point in some way. You know, it's their lot, so... But it also is the public's lot, so, and that's why we would make that investment.
Is there a dollar amount of upgrades, our percentage? Is there a dollar amount that would equal that percentage that wouldn't have to come back to council?
Technically, anything under $75,000 doesn't have to come to council.
So it could get upgraded after the transfer and not come back to council?
It could get upgraded up to $75,000, which...
Out of our pocket.
Yeah, out of, which is better than $350,000.
And, Rob, how does that work for us, for the city, to spend money on property that's no longer theirs, then? If we approve the transfer?
Well, we enter into agreements with other groups. Well, we enter into agreements with other groups to spend money for things that don't belong to us all the time.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's based on contract, right?
We do public, private, and I, I mentioned this, and for the public benefit, I'll say, you know, the only way that we would do that is we would sit down and say, we're going to spend X amount of dollars if it would exceed my, you know, signing authority, and I would keep you in the loop on this, but if it would exceed my signing authority, it would come back to you. If it was under that, well, one way or the other, what would happen is, they would have to agree for, you know, X term of time to say, these many public parking spots would be made available. Because the difference is, somebody used the analogy of like a Walmart lot. We would never do this for, sorry Walmart, but we would never do this for Walmart because they maintain a parking lot specifically for their customers, right? They would not maintain a parking lot for a strip mall of multiple customers plus public parking. So, we would never sit down and say, we would like to fix all your potholes because everybody's complaining on Facebook, and we're just tired of hearing it.
But we don't have any of that here. This is just.
No.
Here you go.
And nor does it interfere with the transfer of that, too.
And any of these decisions would be made by contract, in a written contract.
Yeah.
And so.
There's no blank check.
Yes, and even if council did not vote on it, they would be able to see what the written contract said, and by the policy we've adopted, I have to review everything before Tanner signs it.
Well, and to your point, I, because we've communicated on this, the, the comments I'm getting is, well, giving it to them is one thing, and, and I honestly haven't heard anybody say anything against it. If it's too much for us, it's the city spending money on something they gave away.
Yeah.
Is where people are struggling on this.
Did, yeah.
So, I would move to amend this, to put in a sentence that says that this transfer is of the as-is property.
If you would like to include that, that would be fine. I, by its, its nature, it says that without saying that, but go, if, if that makes you feel comfortable, go ahead.
So, you're amending it to say that?
Well.
I mean, in its current form, isn't it doing just that? Yeah. It does not upgrade it.
Since it's just a fee simple transfer.
It's just a, yeah, it's a fee simple transfer. It does not imply that it's being upgraded.
I'm just putting the words on it.
Sure, yeah.
Her second, her motion.
I'll, I'll second it.
I move to second, let this motion be amended, and amendment again is.
To put in a sentence that says that this transfer of the land is as-is.
And so, where would that go? I assume that we're talking at the end of Section 1?
Yes.
Any, any discussion on the amendment? Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan. Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Okay, this, this amendment is amended, and now we're going to vote on Resolution 2025-42 as amended.
Resolution is amended.
Yeah, the resolution.
The resolution is amended. The amendment is not amended.
Paying attention, scouts?
Resolution as amended. Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Oh, boy. Now, it's the hard part. No.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan. Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Okay, by a vote of five to one, this resolution is, is adopted as amended. We move now to the next resolution, and this is our second reading. It's Resolution Number 2025-49. Mr. Hill.
Resolution Number 2025-49, a resolution adopting the 2025 Knox County Comprehensive Plan as a guide for future development within the city of Mount Vernon.
Mrs. Keener.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend the rule requiring three separate readings and take Resolution 2025-49 to its third and final reading.
Second.
And move to second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan. Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Keener.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt Resolution 2025-49.
Second.
And move to second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Keener.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have worked on this for a very long time, and just as Mayor Starr said, I think that we're both very proud of the work that's gone into this and all of the public comments. I'd like to thank ADF with Sam Filkins here for the work that they have done on this as well.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan. Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. We now move to Resolution for first reading. The first one is Resolution 2025-50. Mr. Hill.
Resolution Number 2025-50, a resolution authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director to accept the proposal and enter into an agreement with Medical Mutual for the provision of 2025, 2026 medical health insurance coverage and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods.
We'll give this its first reading. Give me the committee meeting. 10 minutes, 10 minutes next meeting, please, for a committee meeting.
Come in.
This resolution receives its first reading tonight. Next, we move to Resolution Number 2025-51. Mr. Hill.
Resolution Number 2025-51, a resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the City of Mount Vernon to make supplemental appropriations.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules that require three separate readings and take Resolution Number 2025-51 to its third and final reading.
Second.
We move to second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan. Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2025-51.
Second.
And move to second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. Well, we have our auditor up there right now to talk. You want to take us through this?
Yes, ma'am. So, the first one, are, these are going to get bigger as we go, as you can see, quite a bit bigger toward the end. So, the first one we have is a simple reimbursement to help cover the costs of radar and new cruisers for the police department. The second is a reimbursement we got back for officers completing their training. We used to get these back monthly. Now, they're sent quarterly to us. And items three and four, in the amounts of $57,005.10 and $820,000, are engineering grants that were given their final approval for the city in February of this year. So, we're updating some of these lines to reflect those grants getting, getting a final approval. And, Brian could elaborate on that if you're, if you're interested in hearing it.
Before, before Brian jumps in, if you remember, when we were walking through some of the non-general funds, we talked about as, as we adjusted and learned more, and some of these things became more clear, this was the 206 Fund, that CDBG Fund in the non-general. So, you all still have access to your sheet after the acceptance of this. This will be updated, so that reflects, and then you can see as we go, whenever we make these changes, it says, like, general or non-general, updating or amended, and then after tonight, it will be amended with this with a date. Okay? Does that make sense? All right. You used to get massive Torah scrolls every time, and then you had to keep track of those. So, we're just going to try to keep a timestamp so you know where this is going. So, this will be in that, so you can find it, that non-general slide or the non-general sheet at the tab with 206, which is the CDB, where we manage the CDBG, which last time, why we thought it was important to make that amendment from ODOT to CDBG. It's very important that we track those CDBG Fed dollars because we have, what, four separate, really three, but four that we're managing separately. So, and Brian will explain.
This is a good amount of money.
Yeah.
Sure is.
So, tonight's piece of legislation is, is one grant with two components. So, it's the east side sidewalk where we're going to work on Vine Street, the north side of Vine Street. The bid's open on May 8th, so it's important for us to be ready to enter those contracts. This would be the last step for that. Then it's also the Riverside Park Neighborhood Revitalization, where we've done a whole bunch of, of public meetings, and we have to do six separate activities to, and we met with John, where, you know, we've, I believe we have reached a happy agreement with our friends from Pickleball, and then the other stuff we're going to do besides Pickleball, so.
Very good. Any other questions?
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan. Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is Resolution Number 2025-52. Mr. Hill.
Resolution Number 2025-52, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to accept the donation of a carved pirate and palm tree statue from the Kukosing Valley Rotary Club and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Hager.
I move to suspend the rule requiring three separate readings and take Resolution 2025-52 to its third and final reading.
Second.
And move to second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill.
No, sorry.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan. Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Rule is suspended. Mrs. Hager.
Do I say something now? What do I do now?
You moved to adopt.
Okay, I move to adopt Resolution 2025-52.
Second.
And move to second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Hager.
Yes, I want to say thank you so much for the generous gift from the Kukosing Valley Rotary Club. And I think you'll see up there, we have some really nice pictures of these palms and the pirate that are going to go really nicely on the splash pad. What else? What else?
What, what are these made out of?
Thank you.
You know?
And who actually made them?
Ah, okay, so, first question, what is it made out of? So, there were two large trees that are kind of in the middle of the building that were nearing end of life, and Brian Wade's grandfather actually planted those trees in the park. So, they are, I think they're, it's called a lark or something close to that. And so, those trees were harvested in the preparation of building this, and then Mike Prada, our tree expert, I can find the name in a second, found a carver. Mark, Mike is also a member of the Kukosing Valley Rotary, and he has found a great person to carve it. Let me see if I can get the name.
So, these trees came from Riverside Park?
Yes. These trees were in Riverside Park at the location of the pavilion, sort of in the heart of the splash pad. They were nearing end of life, and we were able to cut them down. It turns out they are ideal for use for benches. It's a, it's a dense wood. Quentin, my, and my tree experts in engineering, said this is the perfect kind of wood to use in a park. It has significant longevity. It's, it lasts really well. So, that was pretty easy conversation. The guy's name is Dave Crego, C-R-E-G-O. He is the tree carving guy. So, he is pictured there, I believe, in the photos that Mike Prada from SOS Tree Service submitted, so.
Um, I know that two years of maintenance was also part of the gift. What is the maintenance, or like, how much would maintenance cost of something like this after the two years? Do we know that?
I mean, it would be just kind of keeping up with the colors. I mean, I think the, the Rotary Clubs will be around. I know the Mount Vernon Rotary has worked really hard to stain the fences that ODOT has installed along the bike trail, and they maintain the pavilions, so, you know, I think they'll be, the Rotary takes pride in these parks for the, for the long term, so.
Excellent.
You know, hopefully that continues, so.
Thank you.
And maybe the Boy Scouts, oh, wait. Maybe they want to help. So, other questions? The other thing that's really good about this, so there's a junction box between the pavilion and the splash pad, and, and Quentin was like figuring out, well, what, how do we hide this junction box? Well, turns out, one of these benches will actually sit on top of the junction box. It eliminates a trip hazard, so it's, in a lot of ways, a win-win.
So, we have a camera near there for.
Oh, yeah.
Vandalism.
Security.
Yeah, we, part of this, you know, we, we, the older camera system where it's the blurry guy with the hood, that's been, been replaced, and we'll, we'll be implementing a high-resolution camera system in that, this whole end of the park is, as part of the project.
Is it the one that Tom can yell at them through it?
I think so.
We can arrange that.
Shout at them.
Well, I think, I think we're going to do the pirate, the, the rules are going to be written, written, read out in pirate speak through the camera system.
Okay, well, thank you.
Great. Jane is our former president of the club, and.
I wanted, when I asked the question about the two-year as well, they said that sometimes the size of, of wood can check. In other words, cracks can be created, and that's why the two years, in case that happens as it continues to dry out.
Super.
Okay, so there shouldn't be a big problem afterwards.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you for the gift. Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Ms., Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Mahan. Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. We now move to ordinances. The first ordinance is ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero nine. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero nine, an ordinance amending the zoning classification of parcels number six six dash zero five six two four point zero zero zero, six six dash zero five six two seven point zero zero zero, six six dash zero five six two eight point zero zero zero, and six six dash five six two nine point zero 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 from R one A Core Residential District to R three Attached Residential District.
Mrs. Keener.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh nine.
Second.
And move to second for the adoption of this ordinance. Mrs. Keener.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a public hearing today. We've had a few meetings. I know a lot of us have watched the video sometimes more than once. And I think there's a lot of thoughts on this one, so I hope everyone will just feel comfortable as they vote and, yeah.
Any other questions? Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener.
I'm sorry, there's just, there's, there's a lot of elements to this one and I, I feel like I have to vote no.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
No.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan. Mrs. Woods.
No.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
By a vote.
It is three to three.
Three to three. And I will move, and the, my one chance in, in six years to vote.
We got you your chance, Bruce.
No. No, no, it was less than that. This is your second time.
My second time, okay. I'm going to vote yes.
College of Township.
Sorry, Bruce.
My vote of four to three. This ordinance is adopted. Next, we move to ordinance for second reading, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash ten. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash ten, an ordinance fixing the number of hourly employees of the city of Mount Vernon in the police department and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods.
Thank you. We'll give this its second reading.
This ordinance receives its second reading. We now move to ordinances for first reading, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash eleven.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash eleven, an ordinance to approve, adopt, and enact the January two thousand and five replacement pages to the codified ordinances, to repeal ordinances in conflict therewith, to publish the enactment of new matter, and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Keener.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're going to give this its first read. I do know that Jay is going to be all over reading these when he gets back, so if anybody wants them, don't, don't come at me all at once.
This ordinance receives its first reading. That concludes the legislative portion of the meeting. We now move to remarks, administration, Mayor Starr.
Thank you, Mr. President and council. Nothing this evening.
Mr. Wow, Mrs. Hager.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to congratulate Alex Taylor for his success in Las Vegas. He'll be representing us at, in Athens, Greece, and I believe in. Somewhere in Brazil, yeah. So congratulations, you're doing the city proud. And on top of that, I think a lot of folks had success at the yard sale trail. A little slow start on, on Saturday, but Sunday was a nice day. So if you didn't sell what you needed to sell at the yard sale trail, May third, that was fun, you can get rid of it at Ariel Foundation Park, May third, Saturday from eight to noon, is spring cleanup day. So again, eight to noon, Ariel Foundation Park, over by the S E C. It's twenty dollars per load, no trailers, but it's unlimited loads. So there's a list on our Facebook page and I'm sure we'll work with Todd and get a press release out, maybe tomorrow, that details what you can and can't dump, but good opportunity to clean that stuff out. This is open not only to the city, but also the county, thanks to our friends over at Knox County Recycling and Litter Prevention. So thank you to them. So everybody, get in line quick because there's ten thirty-yard dumpsters and they will fill up fast, so. That is all, Mr. President.
Mr. Rainman. Mr. Ryan.
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Ruckman.
Nothing this evening, Mr. President.
Mr. Severance.
Two quick things. One is, it's exciting to see that we were awarded five point six million dollars from ODOT, basically TRACK, which is the Transportation Review Advisory Council. This is a huge chunk as we are moving toward the reroute of State Route thirteen, which I, is going to be something that'll improve traffic, but also improve pedestrian walking. I think it's going to be great. And the second thing, I said this the last meeting, I would encourage you to get out and vote, especially for state issue two. We directly benefit in Mount Vernon, Ohio, and the Knox County by this state capital improvement program. I think voting has already started. I was going to go vote today, but it was a little bit after four and they close at four. So I think they're open eight to four maybe, not, not on the weekends, but then May sixth is voting day. Okay, thank you. Five thirty for the next two days, that's good to hear. But I would encourage you to vote yes on issue two. Today and tomorrow till five thirty, good. But this, this brings money to our community directly from the state of Ohio and it's important because this helps improve our roads and bridges and streets and everything. So it's, it's very important to do that. Thank you.
Mrs. Keener.